Good evening. We call a special meeting of the Fairfield City Council to order, please. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, Councilmember Bertoni.
Here.
Councilmember Moy.
Aye.
Councilmember Moy, are you online? Councilmember Panduro.
Here.
Councilmember Tim.
Here.
Councilmember Tonison.
Here.
Vice Mayor Vicaro.
Here.
And Mayor Price.
Here.
Thank you.
Excuse me, city clerk. Kat Moy is on Zoom. Can you ask one more time? Oh, actually, she just, she just got off.
Should I read the new business item? Kat, is that you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. New business, item one, resolution 2021-251 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, authorizing public meetings to be held via teleconferencing pursuant to Government Code Section 54953E and making findings and determinations regarding the same. And our presenter is City Attorney David Lim.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor, and members of the City Council.
And I'll call this regular council meeting for the Fairfield City Council.
I'll take roll call. Councilmember Bertoni?
Here.
Councilmember Moy?
Here.
Councilmember Pandoro?
Here.
Councilmember Tim?
Here.
Councilmember Tonison?
Here.
Vice Mayor Vicaro?
Here.
And Mayor Price.
Here, and we do have a quorum, and the invocation this evening will be led by Pastor Art Zacha at Berean Baptist Church. Pastor, welcome, sir.
Thank you. Let's pray. Lord humbly Father, we thank you for the leaders that you've given us in the city of Fairfield. We ask and pray that you'll help them to make decisions. Pray, Lord, that you'll give them courage to stand against those that would only profit from the city's division, profit from, for their own personal well-being, who don't have the city's interests in mind. Give them clarity of thought, give them courage, help them, Lord, to stand for what is right and to do the things that are honorable in your sight. We thank you for our leaders once again, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. And the Pledge of Allegiance this evening will be led by Councilman Scott Tonison, please. Thank you, Councilman Tonison. Council reports, please. Doris, want to begin, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to report back on attending, we attended the League of California Cities Conference last week, I think it was, in Sacramento, and I was, wanted, just wanted to share, it was my first time attending, and I enjoyed meeting many new council members from across the state. I attended the Latino Caucus Business Meeting, and I'm really excited to be participating in their mentorship program. So, starting a new program where they'll be pairing a newly-elected with a more senior elected member, just to kind of guide them, which I really appreciate that they're going to be doing that for us. I was also elected by my colleagues to be a voting delegate to represent the city of Fairfield, and so, at the very last session on Friday, we were in General Assembly where we voted on two resolutions and amendments to the league bylaws. So, it was a full three days. I learned a lot. I appreciated that I was, I had the opportunity to go, and I also wanted to thank staff. We were all provided this amazing binder full of information, and so, I just, I really appreciated the binder being a first-timer attending this conference. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilman Tonison, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to report on the League of Cities. It was my first, my first time going to, and it was, the education, in my business, I have to do continuing education, and that's kind of like what it felt like with, you know, what we learned in all the classes that we had. And meeting other electeds, there was, I don't know what the exact numbers are, but say there was 1,400 people there, it was probably 11 or 1,200 electeds, and it's, it's kind of cool when you're sitting in the, you know, having breakfast or something, somebody walks by and, you know, "Who are you? I'm the mayor of Ventura. I'm the mayor of," you know, so it was a very humbling experience in that. And then, just the camaraderie that's built between, you know, our staff, our assistant city manager, and our city manager went, and then, the council members that attended, just the camaraderie and the, the learning experience that you can get from, in our case, from the, the upperclassmen or the, you know, the seasoned council members, it was a very, very good learning experience, and I'm looking forward to the next one. And then, Mayor, I just had another issue that I wanted to bring up. Emily, I talked about the bathrooms at, at Lebel Park and at Allen Witt. Well, there are none at Lebel Park, but at Allen Witt, I go through that park probably on the weekends two or three times. You know, I spend, I spend a lot of time driving around in my district, and I know what the reasons are why we don't have them, but I'd just like to put out there, I'd like to try and figure out some ways to where we could have them. We have, in back of, I still call it Diamond Four, I don't know if it is, but in that, back of Diamond Four, there's four bathrooms there. They're fully built, I mean, they're obviously, they're locked up, but I would, I would like to see something come back before us that says, "Hey, other cities are doing this," or "This is working," because when you have 100-plus kids out there for hours, hours at a time, I just can't, I can't fathom that we can't find a way to do something. And then, as, you know, as my colleagues know, I live across the street from Lebel Park. I'd love to see some bathrooms there, too, because a lot of the sites that I see when I look out my front window sometimes aren't, I would much rather see bathrooms, so, you know, if you guys could just come back with something or some, some way, maybe check into some other cities. I know that my daughter lives in San Francisco, and they said they have ways, they're doing it down there. Some of them, some of them open for three or four minutes, and then they close, but, but there, there's ways to do it, and I'd just like to see if we can't come up with a couple. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. Councilman Tim, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and continuing, obviously, the law requires that we give you an update, because we went to the league. Probably, one of the, one of the best things that I took away is, and Scott, you were close, there were 1,700 people there, is you talk to other cities, other electeds, other staff members, and you find out actually how good Fairfield is. It's kind of amazing. You hear some horror stories. Also, too, it gave us a chance to actually sit down and talk at length with other council members from the cities of Asheville and of Vallejo, Susun especially, and that was well worth it. And, and they had seminars, everything from cannabis to fires to drought, to everything that cities are facing, but the one that I found most intriguing was when they had the CEO Director of CalPERS talking about retirement, and how much money it costs cities taxpayers on CalPERS retirements. And one of the questions, well, I, probably the question was, if I, as a private citizen, Merrill Lynch, you know, whatever, I can make 15 or 20 percent, and CalPERS is telling me they can only make 7 percent, how come that is? Well, she explained it, when it was finally done with the explanation, it was like, "I understood it." You don't necessarily have to agree, but you have to understand, they obviously do billions and billions of dollars. That was well worth, probably hour and a half, almost two hours, that we sat in that room, so that was, that was very interesting. And then, finally, too, it's interesting that, because we were gone for, well, a year, well, almost two years, and just, again, and I'll go back to what I was saying at the beginning, is to see the issues, the problems, and, and probably even the successes that cities have had, things that we've gone through, things that we are currently going through, and things I anticipate we're going to go through. So, it was a very, very busy three days, and it was well worth going to. Mayor, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bertoni, please. Your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for coming out to the meeting this evening, and thank you for watching from home as well. I just want to report our, report out on the Fairfield Clergy Action Network, or Fairfield CAN. We have our meetings once a month on the fourth Tuesday of every month, and I just want to thank all of the senior pastors who have come out to spend time here in city council chambers to talk about ways that the faith community and the city of Fairfield can partner to do really good work in the community. It's, it's very effective to have the senior pastors present, because they're kind of, I don't know if I should say this on an open mic, but they're kind of the shot callers. So, it's good to have them in the room. It makes working together a lot more efficient. I want to thank Chief Cantrell for sending the representatives from the Fairfield Police Department to update the Clergy Action Network on our homelessness strategy and our continuing efforts to continue to get better, you know, to continue to address the issues out there. And I especially want to say thank you to the chaplain of Travis Air Force Base who attends our meetings regularly. I want to just thank him for taking the time to be at our meetings. I'm sure that you all, last week, saw the Senate and House Armed Services Committee hearings that were on CNN, C-SPAN, et cetera, about the Afghanistan withdrawal and related issues, and one of the things that I'll honestly say frustrated me and saddened me is that there was not enough talk about the brave young men and women who are our heroes. There was a lot of political posturing, back and forth, but to, to take the time to thank the people who go in harm's way for us is something that is very near and dear to my heart. So, the chaplain and the clergy and myself and others who were in the Fairfield CAN meeting last week have decided to do something special for our brave men and women at Travis Air Force Base to say thank you. The chaplain mentioned that, you know, going into battle, that's not the hard part. Being in battle, that's not the hard part. You know what the hardest part is, according to our chaplain? For our men and women to come home, and to come back and assimilate back with their families, back in the community. So, we are planning something really good, and I'll have more information about that for you as we continue to plan, but we're going to take the time to really say thank you to our men and women at Travis Air Force Base in a way that they'll never forget. So, that's my report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and Councilman, your report, please.
Mr. Mayor, did you call on me?
Yes, we did. Thank you very much. Go ahead, please.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just would like to report tonight that Mayor Price and I, this Saturday, attended a grand event, and it was the Fourth Annual Chief Solano Eagle Honors Dinner, and 10 young people, young men and two young women, for the first time ever, were feted, if you will, had a great, great program that went on, and just a lovely time to be together and to see, see these great leaders already, great leaders in our community. And one of the finest things, that thing that I enjoyed a lot, I do every year that we do this, is the video presentation of the amazing work that these Eagle Scouts perform for our community, and it helps our community in ways that many of us may not recognize, that these young people have gone out and planned and gotten help and led on putting things together, big things, like shelters, and like, one of the coolest things that I saw this time, I'd never seen this one before, was a, it was a mounting block, if you will, for disabled folks who ride horses, and they, it was just really cool what was done there, and I know more and more people who have certain disabilities are riding animals, riding horses, and it's just awesome. And this year, we also, as I just said, had two young ladies who, for the first time ever, in the history of scouting, became Eagle Scouts, and it was really something to see how they just were welcomed by the young men, you know, and honored right along with them. Wow, what an event. It was very nice, and it was nice to be there with the mayor. And I, on top of that, want to follow up with what Councilwoman Bertoni was saying, and that is, I am really excited about the fact that CAN is putting together something that hopefully will all be part of, to thank our troops. I spent a lot of time, as you all know, leading a nonprofit, that, that's what we did, was work for veterans and working with people who literally are overseas or were overseas at the time, and she's absolutely right when she says, "It's the time coming home, if they make it home," that's difficult for many of them. We see a lot of suicides and so on. So, I'm really excited about that, Pam, and thank you so much for helping to put that together and leading on that. We are a huge military town, and sometimes we forget that, and I appreciate your work on that. And that's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Mr. Vice Mayor, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, first of all, I agree with my colleagues who attended the League of California Cities. It was, as always, a great event, and like Councilman Tim was saying, some of the seminars were really interesting. I know we had a seminar on council relations and city manager relations, and, you know, that was, that was a very interesting session. I think most of us attended that. Also, the wildfires, like Chuck had said, PERS, I mean, there was numerous sessions, and as always, you learn so much when you go there, not only from the sessions, but as my colleague said, you learn from other council people, you know, just from networking and talking to them during the breaks and after it's over. It's, to me, that's, that's always the most interesting part of this, because you really do learn from other cities. So, yeah, once again, and I also want to thank Councilwoman Pandoro for being the voting delegate. I know I was for a long time, so thank you, Doris. Also, I do want to get just a quick update. I know we're going to be meeting pretty soon, I think sometime this week, our two-by-two committee on homelessness, and I know, right now, we also have, we will have representation from the Board of Supervisors coming up, which is really a plus for us, because, you know, I've said this before at our council meetings, that if we're going to attack the situation, we're going to need every, everything and everyone we have, and having Solano County at the table is going to be huge. So, I'm looking forward to that. And then, I think that's really about it, Mayor. Well, the only other thing I wanted to say, too, is coming up in November, just a quick reminder, Fairfield is joining other cities in the Bay Area United Against Hate Movement, and I think that's going to be coming up, the second meeting in November. Well, should have a proclamation for that. So, just a reminder for everybody that we've joined other cities to stand united against hate. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, and I should like to just add, too, that one of the things I've always admired about the city of Fairfield, as a planning commissioner, community services commissioner before seeking elected office, is that the city does a really fine job providing those who want to serve in whatever capacity, in the kinds of training that you're hearing about as a result of our visit to the, the League of Cities last week, two weeks ago. But I would also like to remind you that when we get together, there are so many of us, and common elements come forth. Pension reform, of course, is one of those. The economic outlook for California is not as dire as it may sound sometimes, according to the controller, and I really appreciated the fact that there were some common elements that affected all of us, and each of us had an opportunity to participate. So, for those of you who were able to connect with folks from other cities, you can learn from those folks. This is called, in my point of view, the League of California Cities is graduate school for electeds, and what an incredibly powerful one this one was. There were two motivational speakers, one of them African-American skier, Paralympic winner, and her point of all of that training was, as a little girl, she knew she wanted to be a downhill, a downhill skier, even though she only had one leg, and she did it, and she realized that she stood a good chance of winning the medal, and the competitor in front of her, as all the other competitors knew, there was ice on that down slope. The competitor in front of her looked as though she was going to win, but she fell, and our speaker said, "I knew that if I fell, I couldn't stay down," and this is, was the story of her whole life. "I fell, but I was right back up," and that analogy is a very powerful one. We may, we may stumble, we may fall, but we can persevere. And the other issues that were common in many of the sessions were providing for the homeless, affordable housing, mental health, those were really critical issues, and learning how, for those who didn't know, learning how to engage elected officials at both the state and the federal level to lobby for those programs that are so critically important for all of us. So, again, if you have an opportunity, check out the second motivational speaker, Hispanic fellow who was born poor in Ontario, and today, he is worth about $2 billion, and he talked at length about how he was giving back to his communities. Really remarkable, and it was fun to associate with both our city attorneys and realizing that they, too, have a great deal to offer us that we may or may not take as seriously as we should. And then, in conclusion, conclusion about the League of California Cities, I'm really proud of all of you who were able to attend and participate. And then, I'd like to summarize my other comments by saying, I did go downtown last Thursday night for the farmer's market, and I talked not only to the people who were shopping there on a regular basis, but I made a point of talking to every vendor and asking them, "Was this a good experience for you? Are you likely to return next year?" Nobody said no. They all said yes, and I talked to the regular consumers, and I didn't know this, and this was my fault for not knowing, but one of the restaurants downtown on Thursday nights would offer a 20% discount if you had dinner in the restaurant. What an incredibly fine thing. I left there, went over to Fairview Elementary School, because the principal invited me to come take a look at a $30 million renovation project, and what an incredibly wonderful learning experience that is for those students. And it was refreshing for the pastor from the Episcopal Church just across the street to come over and talk about feeding students and feeding staff members sometimes. And then, would like to conclude with one other very, very quick note. Tomorrow morning, I'll be out at Nelda Monday Elementary School, because it's Walk to School Day, and I do that every year with them. Thank you very much. Madam City Manager, your report, please.
I have no-
Oh, I did, I forgot one thing. This afternoon, I went to the groundbreaking for the mental health clinic that the county is building off Beck Avenue. What an incredibly wonderful program that is going to be after all these years, and the groundbreaking was today, and they should be moving in, in about 18 months. So, now, your report, please, Madam.
I have no report tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. City Attorney, your report, sir.
Thank you. Just very briefly, as you know, we had a special meeting just before this meeting where we put in place provisions of a new law that extend the ability to teleconference these meetings, both for council members, other legislative bodies, and members of the public. Just as a reminder to the council, when you take public comments and then any comments after consent calendar or on any item, to give the city clerk time or to ask her directly if there are any people via Zoom or telephone that wish to be heard, so that they can check to see if anyone is waiting online to be heard, just that we cover the public comment provisions for people who are watching remotely. Thank you.
Thank you, and Madam Clerk, your report, please.
I have no report this evening. Thank you.
Then we turn to public comments, please. Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
Persons wishing to address the city council on subjects not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. The council cannot discuss or take action on matters not on the agenda for this meeting, but council members may briefly respond to statements made or questions raised by the public, ask for clarification from staff, refer the matter to staff, request staff to report back to the council at a subsequent meeting, or place the matter on a future agenda. To speak on an agenda item, please complete a speaker's card and give it to me before the item. Speakers are limited to three items, sorry, three minutes per item. When joining via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or press star nine on your phone to request to speak. You will be called on by name and will have three minutes to speak, and I only have one speaker card. Victor? Oh, sorry, I have one more. I have two. First one is Victor. Yes, you can go up to the podium.
Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. Oh, I, thank you. I want, first, I want to thank you and Stefan, it's not here that I, that now I have a roof over my head. I have a home on wheels. Now, I have a bigger problem. Now, I have a bigger problem. When I read in the paper, the Daily Republic, about this TOCO, Community Action, and the people that heading that, it was a big mistake. Let me tell you why. Let me tell you why. First, I lost my ice cream truck. It's been operating for 30 years. Okay? Second, I lost my car. And I just bought it, I bought it 20 months ago. And my credit on the car never missed a payment. Now, when I was trying to apply for credit and they turned me down. I have four credit cards. It's not at all up to the, well, you know, some of them up to max. But then, you know, I am losing the chain of thought here. I'm just kind of, kind of calm down, calm down, Victor. What I'm trying to say is that when I look at my credit score, I said, I almost paid it. I don't know, Chuck, you know where I came from, you know, the Guamanians? I, you know, we, and I'll tell you one fact, that, you know, Mr. Price, I came here since 1959. I went to Armory School, and why they treating me there? They, because they sued me, and the judge ruled in my favor. And I told the judge, Your Honor, I don't remember what I did five or six years ago. They sued me negatively on the paper, and then after that, they blackballed me from the media. And one friend called and said, he, his friend who works for the attorney, said, "You've been red flag." Your Honor, I, I have a certified that I'm handicapped and documented by Social Security. But going back to this Community Action, SOCO, and Mr. Stefan referred me, Stefan and Shelley and they were good, they're the ones got the media. But when this lady, I mean, I'm trying, her name is Dawn in the city of Fairfield, and she said, as she referred me to the lady that's going to help me, she said, "I guarantee she's going to help."
Victor, you must conclude in 30 seconds, please.
A big part, eh?
30 seconds.
Two seconds?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Summarize it quickly.
All right, okay. And what I'm saying, trying to say is that I, I don't know what to do now, but, well, I just, I guess I just have to deal with it. But please, you guys, when you deal with homelessness, oh, you know, I can solve the problem of homelessness, and matter of fact, I'm with that, you know?
Thank you, Victor. Your time is.
Laugh.
Victor, your time is up, sir. Please take your seat. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Clerk, our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Tim Madigan. Been a while since you've been able to come to a meeting.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Tim Madigan with Solano County Library at the Fairfield Civic Center Library Branch. And it has been quite a while. This is my first visit since the pandemic started, so I'm happy to see everyone here and be there with you. Just wanted to give you a little update on the library. We are open now seven days a week, no appointments necessary, so everyone can come in and see us anytime. We have some other things going on, including the pop-up Storytime tomorrow morning at the Cordelia Community Park with our children's librarians, Natasha and Joan, we do on that. So they can do that on Wednesdays, and that continues through the month of October. And then we have an outdoor Storytime here on Thursday morning at 10:30, every Thursday at 10:30 for families as well at our patio. Travis Credit Union is very generous and partnered with us on their superhero, financial savvy superhero reading challenge. So kids can read 10 books for about three hours on books that learn and help them learn how to save money, and then they get some prizes that Travis provided. The teens, we have a teen writing contest again this year going on this month, and so they can submit either fiction or nonfiction, and, but all together, it's like fun reading the imaginative they are and what they come up with. The adults, we do have the book club is in person again, and so I'll be meeting a week from Thursday. And since October, you can read any scary book and come and talk about it Thursday at 3 o'clock. And also, because it is October, this is the time of year we partner with the Food Bank every year with Solano and Contra Costa Food Bank. So any donations you bring to the library, you can put an entry in to get, discover and go free pass for more museums in the Bay Area. So it was great to see everyone again. Thank you very much. Come see us in the library.
Thank you, Timothy.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, any others?
Our next speaker is Teri Dugan. Did I pronounce that correctly? Oh, good.
I would like to commend the, the city of Fairfield. I've never been to a city council meeting where you have started with prayer. I have been to a lot of city council meetings, and I really touched my heart. And it actually touched my heart, too, hearing Victor, because I am here to talk about the homeless. I am here on behalf of the owners of Winery Square at 1955 West Texas Street. I deal with homeless every day at that center. My property owners purchased the property about two and a half years ago, and I manage the property for them. There is a homeless crisis, and I believe that we all agree that it's getting worse here. I have seen it get worse in the last two and a half years. My father lives here, my father-in-law lives here in Fairfield, so I've been coming to Fairfield for the last 30 years. I have seen how it has become worse. I never thought that I would be managing the center that I used to shop at with my mother-in-law. But we can all agree that the private sector, property owners, and the small businesses, they're not the cause of the problem. And I understand that the city and the county governments, they're strapped with dealing with the drug addiction and the homelessness on a daily basis. And you do not have, or you're not funding the resources to abate the crisis. One of the many consequences of the public health crisis is that they're being unfairly passed on to property owners. And, you know, we are seeing it. I'm spending a lot of money on, on security every day. And I have to tell you, the Fairfield Police Department has been nothing but wonderful to work with. I want you to know that they have been very responsive. I have been very happy. Josiah Jacobson has just been amazing. But I feel like we need more help. You know, we don't have deep corporate pockets, and we're, we've already been put in real financial difficulties trying to lease the spaces that are available. And we do have tenants that have moved out because of the homelessness. And I'm at the, in the process now of, you know, putting on the water, on the lawns during the day to keep the homelessness, try to keep them at bay so they're not sitting on the, on the lawn. My, my security people are even a little bit afraid to contact some of these homeless people. And as I said, the city of Fairfield has done a very good job with the, the police department responding. However, there was one instance that I do want you guys to know, and I would like to share with you, that the police, the, the officers that were at the center last week when I was there, were not able to take a repeat offender, a woman who constantly comes on the property because she had such bad lice in her hair. Her, the lice was probably an inch and a half thick. She had black hair, so you can see it. And, you know.
Would you conclude, please?
Yes. Okay, well, anyway, security comes as a premium, and my tenants are paying for that charge. I'm asking that you guys have, you know, more resources available for the property owners so we can, you know, we can, we can help eliminate or, you know, make this not such a big problem. So I would appreciate if we can have more help and more support.
Thank you, and we'll certainly pass that on. Thank you, ma'am.
And Brian said he has someone on Zoom?
Yes, that is correct. Madam City Clerk, we have a participant calling in, phone number ending with 684. I'll go ahead and allow you to talk here, and feel free to unmute. And please state your name.
Can I go ahead?
And you have three minutes.
Is it my turn?
Yes, you are.
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So, good evening, and I wanted to start off by thanking the council for all of your work. I know it's not easy. I want to just start off by saying that the pandemic is far from over, and I really want to encourage people to continue to wear their mask and also to get the vaccination. And for this body to do whatever is within your power to mandate mask-wearing in, in areas that you have control over because, and in addition to this, I know this is controversial, to require employees to be vaccinated, but most importantly, to wear the mask and be conscious, because we talk about how much we love each other, and we're Christians, and we love the community. And the greatest love of all is being concerned and, and showing consideration for one's neighbor. And that's by wearing a mask, getting a vaccination, and I'm so happy that the schools have mandated that. I also wanted, wanted to piggyback off of something that the previous speaker talked about, and that's just in terms of the, the homeless situation. You know, because this thing is, this situation, this problem has been going around and around. We've talked about it so much, but we just, there just seems to be, we just seem to be stuck on talking about this situation. There needs to be something that, in terms of housing. The biggest situation, problem is housing. And I'm so glad that the mental health is building a new facility, because there are a lot of issues in terms of mental health and substance abuse. And I, I just won't, you know, take up much, much more time. Two issues. One is the mask and the vaccination, and the other is the homeless situation. And those are my major concerns. And I again want to thank you all so much for all of your hard work. Thank you, and have a great evening.
And ma'am, could I get your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Gian McDougal.
Okay, thank you.
McDougal, M-C-D-O-U-G-A-L-D, McDougal. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian, do you have any other speakers on Zoom?
Uh, we currently do not. That's the only one.
Hey, part of the homeless problem is, is they like to get in the garbage, and then they, up at Texas Street on the bike trail, they, they drag the garbage out of the dumpster. You can't get mad at a bear if he roots through your garbage. The first time, it's the bear's fault. The second time, it's your fault for not securing your rubbish. So that would help a lot of the cost right there, you know? The hygienics, one lady said something about lice in the hair. Maybe we need to accommodate them to, so they can clean up, because the pandemic that we're in, that's part of a germ warfare thing, and we have to protect them, too, from this COVID, you know, so to assist them in that way. And I walked in kind of late, so I'm sorry that I just interrupted, but it would be a result if we got certain merchants to be responsible for their dumpsters. If they locked it, then that couldn't get drug out, and the great expense wouldn't get passed on to us.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers?
Brian, are there any others?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you.
Sir, your time, your time is up, sorry. Thank you. Turn now to presentations. Madam Clerk, please, if you would.
Item one, presentation, Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Plan. And our speaker is Latonya Torones, Community Development Senior Management Analyst.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Latonya Torones. I am a Senior Management Analyst with the Housing Services Department. I am before you tonight to discuss the CDBG program and the fiscal year '22 through 2027 Consolidated Plan goals and priorities. The city of Fairfield is an entitlement recipient of the HUD CDBG program. The federal CDBG program was created in 1974 to further the development of urban communities through affordable housing, economic opportunities, and suitable living environments. All uses of CDBG funds must meet one of HUD's identified national objectives, which includes benefit to low-income persons or neighborhoods, prevent or eliminate slums or blight, or meet an urgent need. CDBG funds are restricted to eligible uses. CDBG is a highly complex and restrictive program. Agencies or jurisdictions can use up to 15% of the annual grant allocation towards public service activities. The, the funding is best suited for public services, affordable housing, job creation, public facilities, and capital improvement projects in low-income areas. The CDBG program does not require a match. However, HUD does expect that CDBG funds are used to leverage other funds for the project. CDBG funds cannot be the only funding source available for a particular project. CDBG recipients are required to have a consolidated plan that allows the jurisdiction to identify their community needs through market analysis and the needs assessment. The purpose of the consolidated plan is to assist jurisdictions with strategic planning for a five-year period. The planning allows the city to prioritize resources during the consolidated plan period. Fiscal year '21, our current fiscal year, is the final year in the current consolidated plan. A new consolidated plan will be due effective July 1st, 2022. The actions in the consolidated plan are carried out through the annual action plan process, which provides a concise summary of actions and activities that will take place, that will take place during each year to address the five-year consolidated plan. The annual action plan also identifies the resources that are available and that will be used to address the priority needs and goals identified in the plan. The purpose of the consolidated plan allows the city to assess, develop, coordinate, and conduct. Assess housing and community development needs of low-income people and neighborhoods through data, data analysis, community involvement, and agency consultation. Develop goals, strategies, and metrics to invest CDBG funds over the next five years in areas of the greatest demonstrated need. Coordinate with other plans and resources to create partnerships and leverage investments, and to conduct an analysis of impediments to fair housing. The consolidated plan is part of a larger grants management and planning process that can be divided into six phases. Determining needs, setting goal, I'm sorry, setting priorities, determining resources, setting goals, administering the programs, and evaluating performance. The consolidated plan incorporates the first four phases. The fifth phase, administering the programs, encompasses all the actions a grantee undertakes throughout a given program year. The final phase, evaluating performance, is documented in the annual report submitted to HUD called the CAPR. We just brought that to you. The result of each phase serves as the basis for what occurs in the next phase. For example, the needs described in the first phase should influence priority setting in the second phase. phase. The consolidated plan should clearly explain the relationships between needs, priorities, resources, goals, and proposed activities. Citizen participation and consultation are incorporated throughout each phase. Here on this slide, you see a model slightly more broken down, which shows detail on how the five-year consolidated plan is carried out. Each year, the city receives an annual allocation of CDBG grant funding. The goals and resources of the consolidated plan are memorialized through an action plan each year. The city works with CDBG funding recipients to implement their projects. At the end of each program year, the city completes the CAPR to report to HUD the accomplishments of the Annual Action Plan period and its progress towards the goals in the consolidated plan. The CAPR and Annual Action Plan is submitted annually to HUD. As part of the determining needs phase of the consolidated plan, the city launched a campaign in May 2021 titled "What Would You Do With $4 Million"? This included a comprehensive survey to get the community's feedbacks and ideas on the high priority needs in the community. The survey was provided in English, Spanish, and Tagalog. City staff exceeded its requirements by HUD and its Citizen Participation Plan when addressing the needs for the consolidated priorities. The campaign ran for 60 days and was launched on social media, where it received the most impressions of all city's social media posts for the month of May. There was also a press release and public notice in three languages. In addition to social media, the survey announcements were made available at the city's farmer's market. The city worked with over 150 service providers, public and private entities, and the CDBG Advisory Committee to assist with distribution of the survey. City staff went to multiple low-income communities to make the survey information available to those in the community. The Fairfield Police Department was instrumental in assisting with the distribution of the survey to lower-income neighborhoods at community events. In addition, the city recorded a commercial in Spanish to stream on the local Spanish stations. There were 220 survey responses received. This is three times the amount of responses that the city has received in prior CDBG community engagements. In addition to the community survey, city staff held multiple focus groups with community organizations and service providers to gather their feedback on the needs of the clients that they serve. The senior leadership team was also provided an opportunity to provide information concerning what the high-level needs in the city. As part of the strategic planning process of the consolidated plan, the city must set priorities for allocating the CDBG funds within the jurisdiction. The priority needs are the needs that will be addressed by the goals outlined in the strategic plan. The needs assessment included the community feedback from the Community Needs Survey, focus groups, data analysis, and consultations with city leadership. Staff was able to gather a good idea of what the high priority needs are in the city. The proposed priorities were evaluated based upon two factors: the demonstrated need in the city, and then whether or not there were local agencies that were able to address the specific needs. As a way to create consistency, sustainability, and efficiency in priorities throughout the community, the city recommends that we use a two-year, three-year funding model for the public service projects as a strategy during the five-year consolidated plan cycle. This model allows projects to initially be funded for two consecutive years. On year three, new applications for funding will be accepted. The newly funded projects will be funded for the remaining three years of the consolidated plan, and of course, subject to performance and funding availability. Using the two-year, three-year model has many benefits to the city as well as to the grant recipients. For nonprofit organizations and other subrecipients, it will allow them to stabilize funding streams, refine operational practices as necessary, and to project their budgets for a longer period of time. City staff will be allowed to reduce procurement processes and focus more time on monitoring and helping subrecipients meet their program goals and gain better insight on HUD CDBG compliance requirements. Priority needs have been determined as a result of the needs assessment process. There are four high priority needs that have been identified. Each of the priorities has specified goals that are anticipated to be delivered. They are categorized as public services, non-public services, fair housing, and administration. Applicants will be required to submit an application that meets one of the priority goals in one of the listed categories. As part of the application review process, successful applicants for entitlement funding will have met all of the funding requirement, all of the following requirements, which include: they must specifically respond to the priority needs identified in the plan; they must identify specific accomplishments to gauge project success; they must have experience completing similar activities in a timely manner; and they must have demonstrated prior experience in managing federal funds. This slide shows a brief summary of the community survey and what is seen as the highest priorities within the city. The community responses shows that homelessness is the highest priority. Sorry, there's a bug. The survey asks specific questions regarding needs for specific surveys in each of these categories. Through the detailed analysis of the survey responses, focus groups, and conversations, the proposed priorities were developed. So as we talk about the priorities, we'll go over those listed, the goals that are first listed in public services. The total amount of CDBG funds allocated for public service must not exceed 15% of the annual grant application. This is regulatory requirement. So, the recommended goals for homelessness, because homelessness is the highest priority from the community feedback, as well as, I believe, one of the highest priorities in the city, we're recommending that homeless services or the homeless category receive approximately 50% of the public service cap. So it's 15% of the entire grant allocation, and then 50% of that towards homelessness, of that 15%. And so, the city is recommending that for homeless services, to support, expand the provision of services to the unhoused residents, including street outreach, case management, housing search assistance, emergency shelter, and other services. And then the goal for homeless prevention, to expand existing homeless prevention services for at-risk residents, including emergency rental assistance, legal assistance, tenant landlord mediation, and money management for lower-income residents. And then there is the goal of youth, to increase enrichment, life skills, and recreational opportunities for low-to-moderate-income youth, foster youth, and abused children. And our special needs population, to increase opportunities for persons with special needs, elderly, frail elderly, and persons with physical, mental, and developmental disabilities to be housed, become more independent, and be protected from discriminatory practices. And we have our non-public service priorities. These are eligible activities that do not provide a public service. There is no cap on the amount of funding that can be allocated to non-public service activities. The priorities of the non-public service goals are recommended to include affordable housing. I would like to note, although CDBG funds cannot be used to build new housing, it can be used to rehab or acquire existing housing. So for this particular goal, we would like to expand, maintain, and preserve affordable housing, to maintain and preserve the existing affordable housing stock, including rental units and single-family properties owned and occupied by lower-income households. Public facilities and infrastructure, to create, preserve, and improve facilities and infrastructures that serve low-income neighborhoods, homeless, and special needs populations. And then our goal for economic development. The goal for economic development will take place through the current existing Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund. I believe that fund currently has about $235,000 available, and it's a revolving loan, so as those are paid, as those loans are paid off, it revolves back into the loan for continued use. So to reduce the number of persons with incomes below the poverty level and expand economic opportunities for very low and low-income residents. And then we have a priority for fair housing. Fair housing services are a requirement by HUD. The city must maintain a contract with fair housing service providers. The contract may be paid by federal or non-federal funds, and the priority for fair housing will include affirmatively further fair housing to eliminate discrimination in housing choice by providing fair housing counseling, investigation, mediation, enforcement, and education. And lastly, administration. The city will allocate the maximum cap of 20% of funding towards program administration. Administration will support the development of a thriving Fairfield community, especially for persons of low and moderate income, by providing general management, oversight, coordination, public information, and engagement, and administration of the CDBG grant in a fiscally responsible manner. Here we have a tentative and summary timeline for activities that will take place over the next six months concerning the five-year consolidated plan process. The development of the consolidated plan is a comprehensive process. Later this month, the staff expects to bring to you a resolution requesting your approval of the priorities that we're going over today or that we discuss further, that we receive through community output. Once the funding priorities are set, the city anticipates to open its annual CDBG Notice of Funding Availability at or around November the 1st to accept applications for the new CDBG funding cycle. Staff anticipates bringing before you again to review a new Citizen Participation Plan and Analysis of Impediments, which are required to run concurrent with the five-year consolidated plan. And finally, around April or May, staff anticipates coming before you with a final consolidated plan and Annual Action Plan for the first year of the cycle. At this time, there is no need for an approval, as this is an informational item in discussion. I mean, a resolution will be coming forward at the next council meeting for approval of those priorities. I'm available for any questions.
Just real quick, Latonya. So how many surveys did we receive back again?
221. 222, we got one Spanish response.
Councilman Tim, please.
Yeah, thank you. And I'm not sure you can answer this question, or if it's even appropriate at this time, but the county is broken into districts, and the Board of Supervisors, they each have money given to them that they can dole out, obviously with the right restrictions. Number one, has that ever been given thought here, now that we're in districts? Two, because we are lobbied for this nonprofit, that nonprofit, there's a ton of nonprofits. And I think sometimes they either don't respond, or they don't know about this, and then all of a sudden, they find out we're giving out money and they said, hey, we never knew about it. Number three, when will we see this approved list from staff as to where the money's going to go for the next round?
Okay.
And you don't have to answer that now. This is not a gotcha question, right?
I have an answer for you.
But if you could answer, go right ahead.
Definitely. So, our CDBG funding cycle for the next round, which will be effective fiscal year '22, we will actually be opening that, opening applications for that funding cycle as soon as we get approval for our priorities, which we're hoping to be around November the 1st, as the priorities will be coming forward to you in a resolution at the next council meeting. And so, we'll open applications around November 1st, and so organizations will have an opportunity to apply. And then we'll go through our scoring process, rank and review process of the applications with the CDBG Advisory Committee, and we expect to come back to you at or around April or May with the list of those who have been approved through that review process. In terms of, I hear you, I hear echoed a lot that organizations didn't know that the CDBG applications were open, and so we're, through this process that I'm working on, we have created a CDBG interest list, and we're trying to get people to get on that interest list so that we can make sure that they're getting a copy of those email blasts as they go out. We also posted on social media, we do, I, last year I did a press release, and we do public notice in three different languages. I will say, for fiscal year '21, we received about 14 applications, which is double what we've received during the last two fiscal cycles. So, we're hoping to keep that push going to increase the number of applicants that we receive.
Okay, and then my, I guess my final question is, is who, who came up with the priorities?
The priorities were kind of, it's not really a who. It was really based upon a needs analysis through discussions with, from, from the community survey, from conversations with community groups, through the focus group process that we went through, as well as the senior leadership. So it was kind of like a collective just receiving feedback, and we took that feedback and did an analysis, and there was definitely some echoing across the board, and so we took that information that we got, and then were able to develop the priorities from there.
Okay. Thank you very much. You answered most of them. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, colleagues?
Mr. Vice Mayor, please. I'm sorry, just one more quick comment. Yeah, I'm really looking forward to seeing how many other groups are going to come forward. I know we had discussed that before, because I know that, you know, there's other groups that really need it, and I know I'll encourage some of them to definitely come forward and, you know, apply. So, and thank you for our discussion earlier. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Moy, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really, really good and detailed presentation. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
One thing that I think that, a reason, one of the big reasons I believe we have such tremendous, really, failure, not just here in Fairfield, but across the United States in addressing the homeless situation, is that we are not prioritizing what's causing the homelessness. And what we have to focus on, and it should be in part of these priorities, is mental health and drug addiction. I didn't see that anywhere on anything today, and we will not get anything done, we will not, if we don't focus on those two things. It's pure and simple. So I'd like to see that included there, and maybe get some folks going that way. And that's all I really had to say. But it's, I feel strongly about it, and I think anybody who knows anything about homelessness will tell you the same. And thank you again. It was a really good presentation.
Thank you, Councilwoman Moy.
And if I can just briefly respond to that.
Please, go ahead.
And so, we want to keep our priorities as broad as we possibly can, so that we can make sure that we're addressing every single need. And through these priorities, those particular items that were just named, drug addiction and mental health, they were kept in mind. Mental health was one of the number-one items that came across, came up across the board in every single group, every organization that I talked to, mental health came up. And so, as an example for homeless services, we keep it really broad, because then we can still address those items through homeless services and through homeless prevention. Those items can still be addressed through the overall bigger goal. And so that's why we kept it broad enough. And so hopefully, that answers your question, but we made these priorities with those two items in mind.
Great. That's really good news. I think that what would be good, though, when you're putting out the request for folks to apply, that you might want to include that, that language in there. You know, for instance, people could come forward and do things on mental health for, you know, for youth, homeless youth, or people who are coming out of foster care, or whatever, just suggestions, so people can think about that. Because I knew when I was applying, as I ran the local shelter here for women and children, I never heard those words when I was applying here for this. So it's just, it's a suggestion, and it's something I think we should always talk about when we are considering trying to reduce homelessness. And I appreciate what you're saying, and I understand it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments, colleagues? Excellent presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll look forward to seeing how all this comes together in the end. So, thank you.
Thank you.
We turn now to Madam Clerk, to the Consent Calendar, please, if you would.
All matters listed on the Consent Calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the City Council or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item. I do not have any cards, speaker cards. Let me check with Brian. Brian, do you have anyone on Zoom that wants to speak about one of the consent items?
Not at this time, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions, colleagues? Entertained a motion then to approve the Consent Calendar as of this, but moved by the Vice Mayor. Is there a second, please? Seconded by Councilwoman Doris Prandero. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Burt- Councilmember Bertoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Moy?
Yes.
Councilmember Panduro?
Yes.
Councilmember Tim?
Yes.
Councilmember Tonison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Vaccaro?
Yes.
And Mayor Price.
Motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned until our next regularly scheduled meeting, October 19th. Thank you very much, have a pleasant evening, good night.